Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know.
Right.
Financially, like I said.
Right. Somebody sometimes say.
Yes. Now, you know, the, the, you will three, you're three, you got to do that. So you've got to be all, you've got to turn out. It's solid. You can be good. I mean, you're very easy to approach. And if you start in our town.
Yup.
Oh, it's next week, next week.
Yeah. Yeah, the other.
Because he just played on with him, not coming back.
It's good. I'm sure it's. It wasn't for last year. It's like going to the convention. As you're willing to go. Yeah, they were like, hey, something I get for you much for them. But they. They got them. You're even.
I'm looking at you.
Yeah, I thought and say this one.
Right.
You're not on time. You're having some.
Exactly.
Yeah. So. Yeah. But so I was like, so I had, uh, big purpose. It was me and Black. Sarah was usually that city.
Good, good. She's doing what?
What's she play?
Violin. I upgraded, um, I got a gift to my grandmother. She's been using that. Two, one that actually is inside. Tried to buy it.
Yeah. Flying down here.
The one that I bought. Yeah, because I have them restored. He's been trying to buy it. No, I know what I have here. Yes, she wants it.
Uh, I'm not sure. Where do we have?
Nancy, I see human probation.
Morning Nancy.
Morning.
Gentlemen, right? Okay, good morning, everyone. We ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and pledge your allegiance. Dearly Father, we praise you for this day and your purpose for it. Lift our eyes today to seek you first. We know one of the challenges in life is sickness. You are the great physician and you have provided us many caring and professionals over time to help those in need. One of those groups of professionals that show your love in a servant's heart is our nurses. In nineteen eighty-two, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed May sixth to honor the nurses and this entire week throughout our nation to honor the over three million working nurses that consist of the highest percentage of the U.S. healthcare workforce. Lord, we thank you for those nurses whose dedication, compassion, and attention to detail make them the special people they are. Give them strength, good health, and rest as they care for others. Lord, and Sunday will celebrate our mothers. We thank you for creating our mothers with a combination of gifts and talents. The love and sacrifice that a mother provides for her child is like no other. Her time, perseverance, and flexibility to do ten things at one time while attending to her child or children is a testament of her love. We ask you to be with the single moms who need your arms of a father around them to guide their way. For those moms who have never had the blessing of bearing children but whose love and nurturing is priceless to that child that ra- they raise, we ask for strength in your grace. You command us in your word to honor thy mother. May we do that each day with respect and love. To those moms that have passed on to eternity, we thank you for their lives, love, and foundation they left with their children. Father, on Sunday, we'll also remember our Armed Forces Day and the month of May is National Military Appreciation Month. This is the day and month we pay tribute to the men and women who serve in our United States military, and we thank you for their lives and we pray for their safety and protection daily. Lord, we're thankful we live in a land of freedoms that include the opportunity to freely vote for those elected officials. And our primary season is upon us, and we pray for your blessings over the elections. May your glory and peace fill this meeting this morning, guide us with your wisdom and clarification of what your will is for our community. These things we humbly ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting and ask for approval to mince the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fairies, aye?
Aye.
Aye, still carry. And do we have any public comments on agenda items at this time?
None online.
Okay, we'll run the reports, Kaylin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Need for your ratification, our invoice is due through May seventeenth of twenty twenty-three to be paid on May tenth, twenty twenty-three in the amount of eight hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. The breakdown is as follows, with seventy-four point eight-two percent being funded by the general fund at six hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars and eighteen cents. Ten point two-six percent is being funded by grants and other sources at eighty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Nine point seven-one percent is being funded by RMS at seventy-nine thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. And five point two-two percent is being funded by escrow at forty-two thousand, eight hundred eighteen dollars and sixty cents.
Okay, any questions or comments? I have motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Um, I spoke to Eric the other day, and I'm glad to see their fund balance is currently at about twenty point, um, four million, which is good news to have that bit of a fund balance at this point of the year. So, all fairies, aye?
Aye.
Aye, still carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to information items. Uh, Maya.
Morning, Maya.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Matt.
Morning.
This is just to acknowledge that the county will be requesting bids for a flood mitigation and acquisition project, um, and it's funded by grant. Finally got around to getting it out.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to personnel actions. Jessica.
Good morning, Commissioners. Morning Director.
Morning.
The following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions. For the Conservation District, Tina Jedruski, I never say it up right. Um, Admin Specialist Full-Time Replacement, nineteen twenty-four per hour, anticipated to transfer on May fourteenth. For Facilities Management, Grace Hubbard, a custodial worker, full-time replacement, hired at thirteen forty-one per hour and anticipated to start on May fifteenth. For the Pre-Release Center, Kelly Burkholder, resident supervisor, full-time replacement, hired at eighteen ten per hour, anticipated to transfer on May fifteenth. Uh, for Budget and Finance, Judy Carr, hired as AP Role AP Specialist, full-time replacement, at nineteen seventy-six per hour, anticipated to start on June fifth. For the Prison, John Wagener, Correctional Officer Two, full-time replacement, hired at twenty-one forty-eight per hour, and he's transferring into that position on April the thirtieth. And then for the HR Office, we hired a Recruitment Specialist, Kane Angel. Um, it's a full-time replacement, hired at seventeen thirty-five per hour, and he's anticipated to start on May thirtieth.
Now, did you mean to skip over Department of Public Safety?
I did.
Okay.
I meant to say we're taking that off the list.
Okay.
There was an error and it's got to be corrected, so, you know, thanks.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, I have motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All fairies, aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you.
I do have a question, though. Uh, we received an email, uh, recently regarding the part-timers, thousand hours. I believe it was from Krista, and, 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 um, managing their hours, but more importantly, their time. So she, she made a comment that it's not from a fiscal year, it's from a start date.
Hire date.
About hire date.
Right, anniversary date.
And, and, um, I know we addressed this issue several years ago, but now with all the new staff that we have, how are we addressing, you know, monitoring those part-time employees?
I, I just sent out a message this morning to all the leadership to track their part-time hours.
From, from hire date?
Yep.
Right, so department heads are responsible for tracking that. There's a report that's put out, um, I think.
It's on the control, the controllers actually has a report on it for all the part-timers.
Yep, there's a, a report that's updated, I think, bi-weekly, um, so that department heads can see the hours for their part-timers and make sure that they're staying under the thousand hours.
Okay.
So Matt sent out the reminder about that.
Thank you.
We'll recess Commissioners' Public Meeting for the Salary Board. We'll convene the Salary Board at this time, and I'd like to make a motion that we table for one week, um, on the Salary Board Actions where it says, "Request to approve the following employees for override pay." From there down, uh, we table that for one week. I have several questions on some of these, as does my colleagues. So we would only be addressing the Resource Management Service and the Adult Probation Office at this time, and we add that to our agenda next week.
Yeah, it's actually.
How about the ones below the, the straight time?
I don't think that's. That's not actually on the agenda. They were removed prior to our discussion.
It's not?
Yeah, it's not.
Okay.
I wrote sorry, so they must have provided you the wrong.
Okay, they gave me the wrong agenda. Okay, so I can cross.
Right, that doesn't have to be on salary board, right? The straight time, but.
I think the plan is for it to be discussed, yes, with salary board.
Okay.
Okay. So we're addressing which ones in?
Just those two.
It's just those two, okay.
Yes.
So do you need a motion to do that, or?
No, because it's already on there. I had, they didn't give me a new agenda.
Oh, so the new agenda, you don't have, the new agenda. Yeah, I get it, it's not.
Change, yeah.
That's the only thing.
All right, I got it.
Okay.
Yup. Commissioner, seeking your approval on the following Salary Board Actions. In Resource Management Services, request to move Operations and Support Services Clerk from the Pay Grade Five to a Pay Grade Four. In Adult Probation Office, uh, request to add a part-time Master Firearms Instructor, Pay Grade Nine, will not exceed three hundred, uh, working hours in a year.
Can I make a motion to approve both?
Thank you.
I'll second.
All fairies, aye?
Scott, would you, uh, aye, but would you explain, uh, the importance of the, the, uh, part-time, uh, Master Firearms?
Absolutely, we have Eric Fort here today, and I'd rather have him do it, I know from the past.
That's not why I'm here.
You're welcome to come up. I, I just know firsthand that, uh, from being in probation over the years, uh, we used to have to go away for firearm training, which was very costly to the county, and sometimes as much as a week, or hotels and meals. At that time, the supervisor, I believe it was Bob McCullough, wanted to bring it in-house, so we had different, um, staff that went down for training, um, to become certified, um, firearm instructors. There's different levels of it, of Masters Firearms Instructor. Uh, right now, um, Jim Schreiner is the only one who's a Masters Firearms Instructor, uh, for this type of a role with adult probation. So it's important.
And for juvenile, too.
And for juvenile, too, thank you for pointing that out. So it's enormous cost savings by not sending our agents away for, uh, the day or lunches a week for the qualifications and, and the, and training. Jim is retiring after, I believe, thirty.
Thirty-one years.
Thirty-one years of service, so he'll be doing this for approximately the next two years. We have two people that are, in two years, will be able to receive the certification that Jim is doing right now.
Correct.
So Jim will be taking on this role for the next, uh, two years. And, uh, I, I can't see it going up to three hundred hours, but, uh, whatever hours is necessary is a cost savings.
And the great thing is, he's also agreed to help continue the county with, um, Alex training, too, because he's a Master Alex Trainer. Um, so under this role, he'll also be assisting, not coordinating no longer, but assisting with the day trainings that are offered twice a year with the county, too. So he's been very gracious with this.
Thank you. Great.
Thanks.
So a motion, a second, all fairies, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Still carry. Okay, thank you. At this time, then we will adjourn the Salary Board. Thank you, Controller, and we'll reconvene to come to Commissioners' Public Meeting at this time, TDA Actions. Jessica.
Yes, uh, so looking to make, um, these adjustments to our TDA as well. Um, for RMS, request to change the title of the Operation and Support Clerk to Support Associate, and request to move Operations and Support Clerk to Support Associate from a Pay Grade Five to a Pay Grade Four. And then also for APO, request to add the Part-Time Master Firearms Instructor, Pay Grade Nine, and will not exceed three hundred hours per year.
Okay, now a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fairies, aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry, thank you. Thank you, Jessica.
All right, moving on to action items. Maya, seven point one through seven point three.
Good morning, Ian.
Morning.
So we've got some exciting news, um, to share today. Um, for my first time, I'd like to acknowledge and seek your approval on the offer of purchase for Executive Plaza from Horizon Federal Credit Union. Um, the county received three offers, and, um, Horizon was actually the, um, best offer in the amount of three million, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Offers received were, um, two thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and three thou- um, three million, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, the county did go through a formal procurement process to sell the building, which included, um, listing this building for sale with Real Estate Excel, a Jario Realty, and offers to purchase were considered from April tenth through May fourth.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
We believe we have some representatives today.
Sure, we do. We have, um, Jario's here as our, um, representative and agent, and then we also have the, the, um, owners.
We'd love to have them come up and speak. And Maya, the purchase, the listing price was two point two-five million?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Justin Howard. I'm the President and CEO of Horizon Federal Credit Union. We're actually quite excited about this, uh, ability to acquire this wonderful building in our beautiful downtown here of Williamsport. We've seen significant growth over the last seven years, and we acquired a corporate facility in twenty seventeen over on Reach Road that was supposed to last us about twenty years, and we're already outgrown that facility, and we're tripling up on offices and shifting people to Lock Haven and other outlying branches. So we're really looking forward to having our entire team in one spot here in, uh, downtown Williamsport so that we can build our culture and teamwork, as well as we've had to delay hiring of positions because we haven't had space. So, and I'm looking forward that I get to go, uh, walk the lunch in many of our fine establishments, as well as a lot of our staff.
How many employees do you plan on bringing to the building?
Uh, over in the next few years, we are planning on probably by the end of this decade, we will have over a hundred. So, because right now, we currently sit at fifty-seven employees. And, uh, we have some opportunities that are upcoming in the next few years where we may have some substantial growth.
That's wonderful.
Yup.
And you'll be hiring additional employees, which means that it'd be people moving in from out of the area, too.
Yes, yeah, we actually, uh, just hired a Chief Financial and Information Officer last fall that was outside the area as well. So, uh, with getting more space, we will be able to hire some of the additional positions that we've been needing and move forward on our strategic plan. So, yes, we will be bringing some more people in.
Great, thank you.
Yup.
Do, do we need a motion to discuss, sir?
I'll make a motion, but I just asked.
No, no, because why do, I want to, I want to continue the discussion.
Make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve this.
Second, you want a second? Second, okay, discussion?
Okay. So, one of the, you know, I had, I had expressed concerns at a couple of prior meetings about keeping this building, but one of the important things we do as Commissioners is we try to balance the pros and cons of everything we do, right? And to be bringing a corporate headquarters to downtown Williamsport, I think for all three of us, and I hope the community feels the same way, is really huge. It's, it's a huge game changer, because what it begins to do is to return Williamsport to sort of what it was, uh, you know, many, many decades ago. I think one of the concerns that I certainly had, um, in selling the building was that I really didn't want it to sit half-empty, a quarter-empty, through the cycle that commercial real estate owners have to go through when there's a downturn, right? That's the nature of owning commercial real estate. When times are great, things are flush. When they're not so good, you're sitting on a lot of properties, and you're often sitting on, on empty buildings. And so for us to have you come downtown, and as you mentioned, to be hiring people from outside the area, and to be helping to repopulate the county is, is huge, and we really, we really appreciate it. We obviously also appreciate the financial offer, because the taxpayers, you know, ultimately are gonna, are gonna see that, and we've had some discussions about that, maybe we can have more discussions. But we, we do want to, uh, thank you for making the investment in the city and for having the faith to put your headquarters here. You know, you could put it somewhere else, you could have put it in South Side or.
Yup.
Right? Um, I think you're getting more bang for your buck here than doing that, but, um, that's, that's not my business, right? Uh, but in any event, we really do, we do want the public to understand that it's a game changer, because it is the headquarters of a large credit union in our region, yeah, not, not just in the city, so, just wanted to.
You know, twelve years ago, I made a commitment that as much excess county property as we had, that we would try to sell. Okay? And it was one of these buildings. It was gonna be this building, or it was gonna be Third Street Plaza. And, um, this is a, a great day, not only for us, right? But for the city of Williamsport and the business, uh, association. I mean, Bernie and I had cats, I guess, many years ago, remember?
Yeah.
And, uh, uh, we, we talked about, how do you make downtown vibrant? How do you do that? Well, you bring in people. Now, we don't bring them in, we, we expect you to bring them in, right? And, um, what happens then is, you know, you go out for lunch, you go take a walk, you put your sneakers on, you see the stores, you see the shops, you eat at the restaurants, okay, you buy gifts over at Boto's, and all of a sudden, people look and say, hey, you know, this is a pretty cool town. And as we travel the United States, I, I mean, all over the place, you're seeing little quaint towns such as Williamsport that feel revitalized, have those nice boutique shops. That's what it's gonna take, having people like yourselves invest a, a very generous offer, by the way, uh, and invest in our communities. So, uh, I, I, I really applaud and, and thank you for investing here.
Well, thank you, Commissioners.
Yep, thank you. It's an exciting day for us, uh, for the entire county. Uh, Williamsport is the county seat, and, uh, it brings back a vibrant, continues to add to the downtown area. I remember back in the nineties, you could walk around downtown, there'd be forty, fifty stores that were vacant at the time. It was really a vacant downtown area, and it, due to a lot of people's efforts and money and time and sweat equity, they have built this downtown area back up. Um, this is exciting because. The Sarge made a commitment, I did two, four years ago, that I wanted to sell excessive real estate. Uh, we've done so. Uh, we've added a lease down the street that will bring a hundred workers up to the Third Street Plaza on the fourth floor. We'll be moving across the street to help occupy the rest of that empty building on the third floor. And, um, now we bring another hundred people to the downtown community. Uh, many of them will be moving into the area, and, uh, they'll be eating lunch, shopping, and, uh, it's just a, at the same time, puts the building back on tax rolls, and, um, and we're very blessed to have, um, a wonderful sale price. So thank you for your generosity, because this one point four million dollars extra over the listing price that will go to the taxpayers. And, um, so, uh, this is a win-win for everybody, for you folks, for the taxpayers, for the county. It helps us, uh, do our strategic plan, moving more of our resources into one building, so it's more of a county building, so that when people go to, to county government, they can go to one building and don't have to go to multiple buildings to do their business. So we want to thank you so much, and your colleagues and, and supervisors. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioners.
I agree.
Thank, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. One of the, um, discussions we've had is, you know, in a budget of a hundred and ten million dollars, the purchase price can come and go. And one of the discussions we've had is trying to find a way to earmark the money in some sort of fund for the people of the community, so that going forward, we find a way to strip off the interest from it. If we just apply it immediately, it's gone, right? But if we find a way to have it be there, then it becomes a, a way for the public to say, oh, jeez, as a result of selling that building, the Commissioners were able to provide X, Y, Z service, whether it's, whether it's services in the area of mental health, or whether it's with our children. Are looking forward to the future, how can we, you know, make this community more attractive? So hopefully, we'll have more of those discussions, and it may even be a decision decided by the next board, who knows? But whatever, I hope that we do something so that it becomes a legacy for our community, so they understand that, you know, when we do these things, we find a way to pay forward for many generations, right? So that this generation doesn't just.
You're, you're absolutely correct, Commissioner. I like, I reference it to the ARB funds.
Right.
That's a one-time allocation of money, which what we're doing is generational with those monies, and to take this extra money and put it aside so that it's something that will have an impact in our community generational, that's not just paying a bill.
Right, exactly.
Because it would be remiss of us not to, to thank all the people that invested in the downtown community, and I mean all, absolutely, because they did put a substantial amount of investment here. And it has improved, and it has attracted more and more people, so, uh, just want to give a shout out to them.
Absolutely, and to the other people who submitted, submitted offers on this. I, if that's who you, if that's you're referring, I, I think that's a good point, as well as all the people who have stuck in with the downtown through thick and thin, and have continued, you're right, and that's a good point.
It's been a team approach to build a community.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it is a great building, by the way. It's one of our most efficient.
Yes, sir.
I don't think they would offer that price to. Okay, we have a motion, a second, all fairies, aye?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to say aye, aye, aye. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
See you, too.
The next item I have for you is seven point two. It's go to approve and submit the P Corp grant application to the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. It's an amount of thirty thousand dollars. The project that I'm submitting for this year is the access control system for the third floor in the courthouse to provide, um, you know, security, um, system up there for, um, the sheriff's office as well as, um, adult probation and the others on that floor.
You know, this is a good, this is a thirty thousand, it used to be twenty thousand.
It used to.
Right, it's gone up by ten, but this is a good example. We belong to, to C cap, and I think our dues are about thirty thousand a year or something. I mean, in addition to all the sort of assistance we get and guidance and effort to have a voice in Harrisburg, we also, as a result of P Corp, which is our liability insurance, we, and we obviously do everything we can to make sure that we reduce our liability claims, we get money back, and that's what this is, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, look at our budget. We have a budget roughly of, it's like you said, a hundred and ten million, um, thirty-six to thirty-nine million of it comes in through taxes, so the rest has to be grants, and it's the hard work of our department heads. We have people from DPS here and EMS, they apply for many, many grants, the courts, they apply for many grants. Maya, she applies for numerous grants, and how many, how many grants do you have over there in that filing cabinet?
Uh, I actually just checked, I had two hundred and seventy-eight yesterday.
And, and she's trying to maintain control over all these, and. And, and she's trying to maintain control over all these and so it's the hard work of those department heads and those professionals and Maya and to get those extra monies or things don't get done.
Right.
But we love Maya.
Well, thank you.
But again, it comes back to a team effort, comes back to a team effort.
Oh, absolutely, I couldn't do it without, yeah, cooperation for sure.
Absolutely. So, I have a motion.
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
My last item I have for you, seven point three. It's vote to approve change order number one with access control systems in the amount of two thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars and seventy cents. What had happened is when we put out the bid for this, it was overlooked by the sheriff's department that there were no ruler tables, ruler tables included in that specifications and bid package. So, as a result, this is just a change order to include that into it.
Okay. Got a motion?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
And it is a twenty twenty-three budgeted item, so all of you say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry, thank you.
Thank you.
And we did try to see if the old version would work, but it didn't work.
Okay. Mr. Forden.
Good morning, everyone.
Just state your name.
Eric Forden with adult probation.
Thank you.
Like Coming County, on behalf of the courts, together with the single county, with our single county authority, which is West Branch Drug and Alcohol Abuse Commission, is requesting three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to support the Like Coming County probation with restrictive conditions treatment programs, formerly known as the intermediate punishment program. This grant consists of two separate programs. The Like Coming County probation with restrictive DUI conditions, which targets the offenders convicted of driving under influence and those who are facing mandatory sentences, in addition to the Like Coming County Treatment Courts, which is the drug and DUI courts. Both, both the Like Coming County Treatment Courts are accredited through the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania. This grant would include such things as drug and alcohol testing, treatment services, public transportation, salary and benefits of one of our probation officers who oversees the probation with restrictive conditions caseload, treatment court supplies, educational materials, medical treatments such as the Suboxone and Vivitrol, and sending the treatment court team to its yearly treatment court conference in State College. And I just want to emphasize that this grant allocation, it's an annual allocation in the state budgeted, in the state budget that we have been receiving these funds since the nineteen nineties. And these funds are only to be used for these types of programs and not for anything else. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Forden, how much has this decreased over the years?
Uh, Jim McCall can answer that.
Decreased?
Increased.
Or, I'm sorry.
Decreased, I think-
Oh, decrease, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so with COVID, with the decrease in the budget overall, yeah, we have realized, and it went from a two-year grant down to a one-year, an annual grant. We did realize a little bit of a decrease, but that was across the board. And I apologize, I don't remember exactly how much, but it's due to the pandemic.
And I believe, probably two years ago, maybe three years ago, at the C cap conference, one of the priorities was, one of the top five priorities was increased funding for probation and parole services across the state. When you had eighty-one percent of the clients being supervised by county, nineteen percent was being supervised by the state, yet the majority of the funding was going to the state and the counties were doing the majority of the services. It's often talked about, salaries are, by law, are to be funded eighty percent by the state, which has never been eighty percent. I think when I started there in eighty-six, it was in the sixties. It's down to about sixteen percent now, I believe. And that's something that I wish all the commissioners across the state would address with the state through C cap. Because as that funding continues to get cut, it's more of a burden on local counties and it's a, it's a service that's absolutely necessary for public safety in this community, in every community across the state. So, again, we see the IP funding, it's going down also. So, this is something that we have to push at the C cap level because it affects every, every county. We know crime is not going down and with mental health services increasing, a lot of clientele experiencing more mental health issues, we're gonna see a rise in, in clientele. So, with the combination of mental health on the increase, crime on the increase, this is something that, that needs to be spoken to all the state and local, all the state legislators.
Okay, I'd like to have a conversation with you as well as the single authority and talk about the opioid settlement. And if, if that can be backfed into our budget, so that it would free up some of our general fund money for other, other services. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we can do it, but, but when you're talking about the treatment, you know, your drug treatment, that's part of the settlement.
I think there's a meeting, right? I believe there's a meeting.
For instance, one part would be urine testing. Urine testing, those cups are very expensive. And, and that could be, if we could do it, if it were formidable, that would be one expense that you could-
Absolutely.
And transfer over.
To fill in our budget with that money, as much as we could, and, and then utilize those other funds for other projects or programs that, that is probably needed.
In prevention.
Yeah, in prevention. You know, Commissioner Mayor Beato always, always talked about, we can nip this off in the butt in eighteen years if we went after prevention, if we funded prevention.
So, you know, hopefully, we're gonna have a discussion about using the medical assisted treatment in the, in the prison with the opioid funds. And we've met with Chris Ebner, we've met with the single county authority. You guys have been there. I'm not sure, it's very circumspect what they allow us to use the money for, right? And it's in the settlement agreement. But to the point that, that both you're making, this is a good example for citizens of how what happens in Harrisburg directly affects your pocketbook here, right? Because when it drops down to sixteen or twenty percent funding, it's really not being fair to solving the problem because the crime crosses county borders, right? We end up with people on probation here who may have done something in another community and wound up here. Or maybe they were at Muncie and then they were released and they got into trouble. Or maybe they didn't get into trouble, not everybody who goes to prison gets into trouble again. But the point is that it's, it needs a statewide approach to the problem, right? And so when they leave it up to us, poorer communities are left in a more difficult spot to have to pick up the, the cost of probation.
I'll give you an example, when I was a deputy next door, what Eric and his staff are doing now, we often had cases from other counties that would come here, purchase drugs. They were arrested for possession, it's called a courtesy case. So, what you do is, once the court sentences them, they go back and are supervised by that county as a courtesy. However, when they violate, they come back before this judge and they get put in our county prison and utilize our resources.
Even if they violate the other county?
Right, because it's our case.
Right.
They don't have an address here and then we have to house them and this.
Right.
So, that's a very common practice. And it's something that, that all counties experience. But we had a large amount of them because they were coming here to purchase drugs or arrested and they're, they're a courtesy case. But they're okay until they violate. Once they violate, then they're back in our, our, we're paying expenses.
We appreciate that you guys applied for the grant. It's obviously important and we know you do it every year, but being on top of that is, if you don't do it, we won't get the money.
And it's also a twenty twenty-three budget value.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a motion, second?
I'll second, I'll move.
Move?
Second.
All of you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry, thank you.
Okay.
And thank you to the courts for their work.
Are you doing both of them?
Where am I, Lee?
Austin's here.
Oh, okay.
Good to go.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
And this is actually a typo on the seven point five, it should be twenty twenty-one fair funds. And step is seeking your, well, pursuing your amendment to, to the agreement with step for the E Rep program from twenty twenty-one fair supportive housing program. And this is the reason because E Rep will be ending soon in twenty twenty-three and will need additional funding for its supportive housing program to increase. They're asking for a one-year extension and the end date will be June tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Malik. Thank you for correcting the year or two because I know government's behind, but that'd be really behind. Okay. So, a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All of you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. The gentleman from Horizon, you're welcome to stay if you like, you don't have to stay if you don't. Okay?
Commissioner Mayor Beato will be singing at the end of that.
Oh, that's what?
He's a really good tap dancer.
I do a Democratic tap dance.
Exit stage left.
Sing Italian opera.
Hi.
Good morning, commissioners, good morning, Matt. So, today, I have a request to approve change order number one to an agreement with Bassett Engineering for the bridge bundling program. This is something that we've briefed you guys on in the past, but we had to follow up on some things on our end before we could bring it before you. The change order would increase the contracted amount by eighty-nine thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars, which would increase the contract to eight hundred thirty-six thousand four twenty-eight. So, over the last few years of the program, there have been, the agreement, but have required additional efforts that, you know, after some discussion with Bassett Engineering, we felt that justified an increase to their overall amount. An example of this would be excessive coordination with utilities that went above and beyond what was reasonably expected when they, you know, put in for this program. But there were also some items that they did that saved the county either some significant time or significant funding. So, the, the primary one for that would be the pre-purchase of the aluminum box culverts and the concrete structure for bundle two. Were it not for the pre-purchase of those, number one, the contractors would have been allowed to purchase them on their own but apply the five percent standard that PennDOT allows based on the contract price. So, it, just in that alone, we would have paid an additional one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. But also, if we didn't pre-purchase bundles one and two with the way we did our contracting, you know, schedule, we wouldn't have been able to do those bundles when we did. We did bundle one in twenty twenty-one, we didn't go to, we didn't start construction until June, really. Had we not pre-purchased the aluminum box culverts, there would have been no way for us to get a contractor on board and then for them to purchase the structures and then get them out to site before the end of the season. And likewise for bundle two. So, you know, this is one of those ones where, you know, it's an increase to the contract of about eleven percent, but we're, we're ending up saving more money from, you know, having done this than if we had not, you know, asked Bassett to perform these services for us.
But wasn't that, wasn't the purpose of bridge bundling to be able to get these discounts?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, without the, the way we, you know, structured this program. And one of the things that, you know, we were thankful when we, we reviewed all the proposals for this was that Bassett's was very flexible and they provided some, you know, additional sort of outside-the-box thinking that, you know, we ended up saving, you know, a significant bit of money on. So, in, in that regard, yes, Commissioner, we were able to save a good chunk of change on this. I, I will say just anecdotally, even with the change order, Bassett Engineering's new price would still be approximately four hundred and twenty thousand dollars less than the next lowest qualified proposal. So, even with the increase, we are still well below the next lowest price.
So, I, I think that part of what we struggled here was balancing the fairness, the equity, right? When, when we engage and part of the contract says, okay, you're gonna coordinate with utilities, but the coordination becomes extremely complicated because of P P and L and other utility requirements. It isn't, you know, you might say, just go out and fix a bridge, but it isn't necessarily as easy as just going out and fix the bridge. And then when you go to move telephone poles and electric poles, it's not as easy as we sometimes envision. And in this case-
It's a lot down in Low Sock.
Right, exactly.
That's off a share industry, you know?
Right.
We need P P and L's assistance.
Right, and that, and that was one microcosm of what happened. And I, I think the, the effort here was to try to balance and, and to the planning department's credit, they went through with a fine-tooth comb every line item of the request and honed out the things that they felt should have been accounted for in the original bid and things that legitimately were an expense above and beyond what is considered reasonable. And, you know, while one might think, well, just grind them into the ground, it isn't necessarily fair to anyone when you're doing a contract, and I, and I know Commissioner Missair, you've been on the other receiving end of that, to, to not make sure that you are fair and reasonable about what ends up happening. Technically, under the law, the solicitors here, when someone performs a service, you have to pay for it.
Yep.
And so, this was a negotiation back and forth with Bassett to be both fair and for them to be fair with us and for us to be fair with them that a service was performed and that we're gonna make sure that they don't end up taking it on the chin because of unforeseen problems.
Yeah, the, the initial request that came before the planning department for the change order was a hundred and eleven thousand. And we sat down with Bassett Engineering's team and, you know, negoti-, not negotiated, but in a sense, negotiated on things that we felt should have been accounted for or things that we were willing to go, yeah, you guys have had gone above and beyond, you know, what we could have reasonably expected here or, or what could have been anticipated in this. Because a lot of them, that, you know, like the P P L and like the other utility or right, securing right-of-way on behalf of townships when that was a township-
Responsibility.
Responsibility, right? Those were things that, you know, they went out and did in order to keep the program moving so that we could continue moving forward. So, those items, we, we were willing to say, yes, you know, you, you guys did go above and beyond here and that it justifies the, the cost increase, so. And this would be funded entirely through the county's liquid fuel allocation that, you know, we have a, a good balance in. We, that was the, kind of the holdup is that Sal, who runs the liquid fuels, you know, program for our, our department, at least, is our point person for it, coordinated with them to make sure that this would definitely be a viable use of those funds so that way, we didn't have to pull from Act thirteen or anything like that. These would come straight from liquid fuels and were approved to do so.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All of you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Seven and seven point eight, Beth, agreement with EQT?
Where are you, Beth?
Good morning. Um, this is an agreement with EQT. It's actually not an agreement, it's a gift, to be quite honest. Alta, when it was Alta before EQT purchased it, had built a hundred and ninety-foot trileg communications tower up off of Matthews Road in Cascade Township. When EQT purchased Alta, they no longer had a use for that tower. We found out they no longer had a use and they were looking to get rid of the tower and the director tracked down the people to talk to. And between him and I and several meetings, EQT has donated us that tower. They have signed it over to us with your permission. It's a hundred and ninety-foot tower. The compound is encased with a six-foot-high chain-link fence with the barbed wire on top, very much like our radio compounds. It comes with a twenty-by-twelve equipment building. It is not a building that is our specifications for our equipment, but is an equipment building that if we were to lease space on that tower, that someone else could use. So, if we ever use the tower for future development, which someday down the road we will, whenever the requirement for digital, we'll need that to cover areas up eighty-seven and such that won't be covered. We'll have to put our own shelter in. Along with the lease for, with the Little Fawn Hunting Club that they have already, which is a permanent, forever lease, came with the tower as a gift from EQT. They have already signed the paperwork, signed it over to us with your signature, the, the deal is complete. And there's a second, the, the next part of it is seven point seven, I'm sorry, seven point eight. the next part of it is seven point seven, I'm sorry, seven point eight, which is the roadway agreement with the landowner, the right-of-way agreement with the landowner, the Duncan's family that owns the access road that goes up to that gas well property that we would have to cross to get up to the property. So according to what I, we've just built with the construction of the sites, this is probably a five-to-six-hundred-thousand-dollar gift from EQT. Just for the, that's not counting if we had to construct it. That's just for the items to construct. Very large gift.
Absolutely. We're going to thank them.
Yeah.
And hats off to the director and to you all for taking the initiative to follow up on this.
Yeah, Hutch and I had several meetings with them, a lot of talk back and forth. One of our vendors are actually the ones who told us that they were looking to, to offload the tower. So it took, took a while to track down the right person that we needed to talk to because it was, you know, Alta's and then EQT's and he was the person in charge of the tower now because it was basically sitting empty. We went up and did some radio testing from there to make sure it would benefit us in the future, Director Hutchins and I did. And it is a perfect location, very up high, you know, pristine site, just like all of our other sites. And we, we all look forward to using it in the future.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Hutch. Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
And our thanks to EQT for doing that.
They have done tremendous.
They do a lot. Fire departments and ambulance services, they do a lot for our community.
Their company definitely gives back so much of themselves to the community.
I have a, a state organization that I'm the secretary for that we look out for telecommunications throughout the state. If they have a big incident or if they're going through something in their life, we did challenge points to, to send them, like if their whole center has, you know, a death of a child that they're dealing with. And EQT actually sponsored those points for me two years ago and paid for them to be manufactured so that we could send them to, you know, anyone who needs them and the cars that go with them. And so, yeah, EQT is a huge, they, they do a lot for our community.
They sent us a month report of their giving and I always enjoy looking to see who they gave to this month and how it helped.
Yeah, this is a huge gift. I don't know if they realized initially what a big gift this is to us, but I mean, we just built the two sour sites that with the construction costs were over a million dollars. And this was just the cost of the materials would have been five-to-six-hundred thousand without having, if you guys, if you ever see where this site is, if we had to construct the road that is built up to this site, this, this would be a one-and-a-half-million-dollar site. It's very high up and the road is amazing because it's a gas well site and they build some good roads. So, yeah, they did a great job for us.
Thank you.
Thanks also to the Duncan family for agreeing to that.
To the right-of-way.
To the right-of-way. Otherwise, we couldn't get to the gift that was given to us.
Yes.
All right, lastly, seven point nine. Nancy?
Good morning, Commissioners. A juvenile probation is asking for your approval for a birthright treatment alternative, DTA, for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three and two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four contract season. This is a renewal. They operate two residential facilities emphasizing treatment for adolescent male sex offenders. He attempts to balance their treatment population also by admitting illegal use for non-sex offenders. And there are no rate increases for DTA.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Have motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner, comment?
Do you have anything?
No, well, I do. As a matter of fact, with the sheriff's build-out.
Yes.
Were you going to say anything about that?
No, you go ahead.
No, I went over yesterday. Is this the last build-out we had on the agenda? Except for when we moved?
Yes.
Okay, well, anyway, it's, it's fantastic. It's, they've done a great job. My hats off to the, the maintenance, the facility director. But what was more important is that they went down to the, the federal prison, right, to look at the surplus.
Yes.
And, and I mean, incredible opportunity for us to get well over a hundred thousand dollars worth of gifts again, you know, to, to put in his bill.
Yeah, for the sales. Not just, we're going to get additional things to prepare for the future.
Stuff they were just going to take the recycling and throw out and, and sheriff's office found out about it. We went down and looked at it and they're willing to give it to us.
So, you know, keeping your eyes and ears open, gave us that opportunity and, boy, we'll take advantage of that.
Yep. We're planning on heading down in about a week.
We need, we need a lot of people to get what we're trying to get out of there.
Got it figured out.
Just don't set off any smoke detectors.
We'll try not to.
Commissioner, anything?
No, just thanks to, to facilities for doing that and to the sheriff for patience. And, you know, it was not a rough, I mean, it was not an easy time because it was complicated. And sometimes we ask staff to do too many things at the same time in too many directions and it creates, in any facility, it creates a lot of angst. We do want to thank them, both the sheriff and his staff for their patience and the facilities and the director of facilities, Mr. George, for their commitment. And we're coming out on the end of the light at the end of the tunnel on that. And I'm sure that everyone is going to be pleased, the public at the end of the day especially.
Phase one should be done into June, mid-July, and then we'll continue moving on.
Yeah.
And I, I do have one more thing to say is that, you know, Commissioner Mayor Beato and I, we missed, you know, the, all the excitement during the primaries.
Oh, boy.
But trust me, we know the feeling and the stress. And we wish everyone well over the primary. And we can get back to work, right?
Yep. There's two things I'd like to address, and there's, there's two narratives being put out there that I would hope the sun could address these also. The first narrative that's being put out is for some, and I'm glad Jason Fink's in the audience today. The narrative that commissioners had anything to do with Shopvac leaving or the Chinese company buying Shopvac is absolutely ludicrous. Ludicrous. We found out Shopvac was meeting, leaving, excuse me, leaving when the public did. I was actually in the Mulberry Street Cafe having lunch when I found out. And went back and found out they were leaving. Called Jason Fink immediately, and I don't think Jason had found out yet. What had happened, and this is fact, and Jason can back this up, the family that owned that company owned a bank note of forty-eight million dollars to JP Morgan Chase in New York. They owed that bank note due to poor management. They then turned it over to Hillco and they wanted their money. They're a bank. They don't care who pays it. They want their money. There was a hedge-fund manager from Pittsburgh who's a local gentleman that was interested in it. We went with Jason and the mayor and any other elected official with them on a tour. That hedge-fund manager couldn't raise the money. We didn't know who was bidding on this, nor were we privileged to know who was bidding on this. Jason found out after the fact from Hillco that there was two U.S. companies that were interested in it, but they were going to move the operations immediately to Mexico. That's a fact. The company that did buy it is a Chinese-based company. We found out when the public found out. Jason, is that accurate? He's down to say, yes. When we heard that they were taking some of their operations overseas, we found out when the public found out. This is private enterprise, folks. There's not a politician alive that could stop that. Anyone who wants to have an ego and stick their chest down and say, I could stop that, I could lead the charge, is misleading people. You work as a team. Commissioners' authority is very limited. We try to bring business here. What the commissioners have done is they brought a business here and sold land to them across from the landfill. An American-based company, Digger and Associates. That's something we did have direct involvement in because we own the land and we sold to them. And Chamber brought us to that buyer. And we worked as a team to get that done. We're working with the Chamber now on another manufacturer coming to that area and selling more land under a LOI that we're having drafted right now, letter of interest. We live in a democracy. We live in a country where people can buy what they want. Chase Manhattan, JP, JP Morgan Chase, they wanted their forty-eight million dollars. They didn't care who was going to buy it. They wanted that bank note satisfied. Commissioners had nothing to do with it, nor could they stop anyone from buying it. And anyone puts out that narrative, it's false. The second thing is an editorial in the day's paper. Talks about full-time responsibilities. This person is writing and expressed a strong belief in the importance of being a full-time county commissioner. Serving as a commissioner for incoming counties is a significant responsibility, requires the utmost dedication and intention. At the end, it says, "To date, there's only one candidate for county commissioner," and mentions that person's name, "as announced, if elected, the position would be a full-time position." That's inaccurate. I think all the candidates have said that. They realize it's a full-time position. People who have approached me about running for commissioner, I've told them it is a full-time position. You better be ready to do things at night and on weekends. I've had two vacations in four years. On both, both vacations, I was working. The most recent, when I was over the corner on the phone at ten-thirty at night, my wife says, "We're on vacation. Can you please put your phone down?" Every elected official is full-time. Go over and look at Tom Heap. He's there on nights and weekends. The sheriff, he sends us emails at 2:00 a.m. These people work their tails off, and so do the county commissioners. It's a full-time job. If it wasn't, how in the world could this board of commissioners complete seventeen bridges by the end of 2023? How could we have ended and not renewed the Sherwell Building lease? Located a site for the corner, developed the Timber Run Industrial Park, do the housing initiative program that we were meeting with developers on, on a part-time basis? How, how could we do that? We couldn't. How could we develop a generational impact plan for the ARBA monies? That governor, Senator Casey complimented us and said, this should be a model for across the state for all the, all the other counties with their ARBA monies. That takes time to do that. Not part-time, full-time. How could we acquire land for the land conversion so that we can sell part of the golf course off, so that we could bring additional housing here? How could we update policies and spend as much time as we have on compensation for employees that has increased one-point-two-million dollars in wages for retention doing this part-time? You can't. So for this person to say there's one candidate that says it publicly, that's a lie. It's a lie. I've said it publicly. This is a full-time job. And I called this person out on the phone today and she says, well, I'll do a retraction. Well, I'm sorry, the damage is done. If you want to say that this person feels, and has said that, that's fine. But don't say they're the only candidate that has announced, if elected, the position would be full-time. I've done this job full-time for four years. If I'm fortunate enough to be re-elected, I'll do it again for four years. And I expect my colleagues and such as these two to be here because they've been here. Or we wouldn't have done what we've accomplished. And I take great offense at people that say that we haven't done anything. And I take great offense at saying the county's lazy and our department heads don't do what they're supposed to do. We got a great team here at the county. And we're getting a lot of things accomplished. And all these jobs are full-time. I know anyone who runs for office has every intentions of being there full-time. If not, their heart's in the wrong place. And I would hope that the sun addresses these two issues so that these narratives will stop. It's not healthy for the community. It's not healthy for anyone. Get your facts right before you talk. Thank you.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Mr. Sortman?
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Director. I wanted to make a comment, but some of Commissioner Metzger's comments I would just address real quickly. As a Low Sock Township supervisor, it's, it's not a full-time job, but trust me, I put a lot of hours in. And as, as Commissioner Metzger said, you're out at night, you're out on the weekends, you're out with your constituents, you're at Little League openings. You do so many things as an elected official. So those of us that care, put the time in. That's all, that's all I'll say on that subject. What I really wanted to say today was that I've had the privilege for the last four or five months to attend your weekly meetings. Most of our residents never get that opportunity. I would like to just thank all of you. It is, it's a pleasure to watch the professionalism that each of the commissioners, your staff, your director puts forward. I, I was lucky to go around and watch other meetings. Most of our county representatives do a phenomenal job of being professional. But I wanted to personally thank all of you for the professionalism you show. I would also like to comment as a taxpayer, two major things that have, that have always disturbed me was the Sherwell lease. I always felt that was a way, way overpaid lease. And the fact that we own two buildings in downtown Williamsport that half of them did not have county employees in. And as, as Commissioner Messera has mentioned, and I know this from being fourteen years of Low Sock Township, nothing moves fast. But I appreciate the dedication to fix those two issues because as a taxpayer, I felt those were two major issues. And I appreciate the fix. And it's going to save us a lot of taxpayers' money, which is what I look to do as Low Sock Township. And I'm thankful that you guys are taking care of our money as well. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. It was also difficult to do things for two years.
Absolutely.
We can't, we couldn't do a lot of things during those two years.
Yeah, and, and again, not to, not to jump in on that, but at Low Sock Township, we felt the same way. You know, we had, we had to go into a major slowdown for two years and not accomplish things that we needed to do. And now we're back, we're back on track as you guys are. And again, I appreciate it.
Yep. So what this board of commissioners has been able to do basically in two years has been nothing less remarkable. Yes, Mr. Shireman?
Good morning. How's everyone doing today?
Good. How are you?
Not too bad.
Good.
Not too bad.
Good.
Absolutely extra work.
We're talking here about industries that have been ended. It's been brought into the county. Also, there's been one industry that's not been mentioned that's come into the county that's cost us money, and I'm looking at it from the other side, is the West Company. I have seen in Jersey Shore three houses since last May in the same block that have cost over $1,500,000 to acquire. Have never seen that in Jersey Shore before. It is where the West Company is going to locate. That is three houses that are coming off the tax rolls for the county, for Jersey Shore, and the school board. So it's nice to get the jobs coming. But on the other hand, the situation in the Jersey Shore community as it is, taxpayers like myself that live or in the school district and in the Jersey Shore borough, we're getting waxed twice because we're getting shorted on two ends. That is the other end of the sword. Three properties up there got sold for $1.5 million. I don't think there's ever been in the history of Lycoming County, three residential properties on the line, on the same street, that have gotten acquired for $1.5 million. And the other thing that's been overlooked with it, with the increased traffic in Jersey Shore, we already have a major problem with loss you run that has to be done. This is going to put a lot more stress on the resources of Jersey Shore borough, the streets and everything else. And the one street that's going to be coming up for main traffic runs right between the junior high school and the elementary school. So it is a double-edged sword. So in the bigger light of things, the community of Jersey Shore and its residents and property owners like me are going to get hit twice or maybe three times with what the county will lose in property value, and we're paying three times for it. So there's things to be considered on that. And I do want to take the time out, you've been talking about the press today. I was here a couple of weeks ago, and thanks to the graciousness of the commissioners, they let me talk about the situation veterans face with Agent Orange, burn pits, and everything else. I give copies of this literature to the reporter from the Sun Gazette, also from the Web Weekly, and went to talk to Jim Webb about getting something printed up, which would be beneficial to this district or to the people of Lycoming County and especially veterans. This county has over 9,000 veterans, which is almost coming to 10% of the population. I haven't seen anything or promised anything, and I've talked to a few veterans. I guess when it comes to the press and paying attention to the veterans and their needs, I guess mostly it's lip service at this point. This is information that affects everybody, and two entities won't even publish it or done anything with it, but I handed it to them. And one reporter's done an interview with our current veteran VA representative, and all the little bits mentioned in the end about Agent Orange and that. Had an opportunity from the Sun Gazette and the Web Weekly, and being promised, these two publications should be ashamed of themselves. You know, you get out here and you pray to vets up here with everything, and you pay homage to them, now to putting information in the paper, which will help these people and other generations coming down, like from Desert Storm and that, that are going to be suffering from leukemia and everything else with it. I didn't know anything about getting into with the vets till after I retired, and there was a session with a lawyer in town that I found out what I was entitled to. You're not doing the public a favor at all. There was an article in the paper with the current VA rep here, all information's not getting out. You've had a chance to put out this information, period. You ought to be disgraced. It's a shame that you can't help the veterans, VA veterans. I have one VA veteran right now who, because of Camp Lejeune and Vietnam and Marines getting exposed to Agent Orange and all that, is going to be going on dialysis pretty soon because he's only got 30% function of his kidneys. And you people can't put out this information to help the public? Shame on you.
John, before you go, I know you're upset, and thanks for a couple of things. Thanks for bringing that to me. I think be patient with the press. I would be surprised if they're not. I don't own the paper, but I say that because I know that they are deeply concerned. Can I just comment on something on the property tax? The West Company presumably is going to build something. I can't imagine they spent $1.5 million to have it empty land. What they build will be taxed.
After seven years.
Right. There is a lurch there or a local. I get, I understand. And we understand the pain, and so I'm not minimizing it. I just want you to understand that they wouldn't have just torn down the property to have it sit as...
I will not say that.
No, no, I know you didn't.
What I said was total fact.
Absolutely.
In my 43 years in Jersey Shore, I have never seen three houses in a row being sold all at one time.
For that price.
Probably paying at least $200,000 to $300,000 over market value. But part of it was just because of the homeowners that own them. They can get the money out of it, I don't blame them, but this is the other side of the sword. And also, I've seen in the last three weeks, one house is coming down now. The Jersey Shore Hospital, two guys who bought a house across from it, they tore it down, turned it into parking lot. That's four properties off the tax rolls. They sold to take up the shortage of oil. Somebody's got to pay for it. It's going to be taxpayers, and the taxpayers of Jersey Shore are getting waxed probably three times along with town here with it. The other people in the Jersey Shore School District outside of the borough of Jersey Shore, they're only paying once. We're the ones taking the run of it. And we've got a major problem with loss you run there. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay, John, and thank you, and we are aware of loss you run, and we're going to do everything we can to try to help. And in terms of the paper, it was two weeks ago. We appreciated you bringing that information. I have a feeling you're going to see some stuff in the paper about it.
I hope so. But I've been promised, it's been over a month.
I know.
You don't see something, okay?
I know.
And I'm bringing this information to some fellow veterans.
And there are a lot of veterans struggling and suffering from Agent Orange. Absolutely.
So when it doesn't come out like it should, okay? And I feel the same way, okay? In some instances with people, you're being paid lip service, and that's it.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
I'm sorry if I lost my temper.
No, no, it's okay.
It's passionate.
It's passionate.
Very passionate about something.
Because I know both Jim Webb and the Sun Gazette care very much about veterans, but we'll see if we can get that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Demetra Mafit. I'll type before I was...
Could you pull the microphone down?
I'm a little short.
I still need your opinion.
I know. But I did want to thank you, Commissioner Metzger, for your statement, because it is a full-time job, and I think that a lot of the public don't see, or they think that they don't see a lot of the work that a commissioner does, because I know for Rick, it's been times where he'd be out till 11 o'clock at night, going to dinner, you know, a lot of things. And like Mr. Sortman said, it has to be expected that this is a full-time job, just like when you're in the military. You work 24/7 pretty much, so it never stops. But I did want to say thank you for saying what you said, because it does take a certain individual to quash a lie and say, "No, this is it." So I do thank you for that. It's regarding mental health in the county. I had went and talked to DA Gardner about his treatment corps and I want to say Mental Health Corps and everything. I kept getting back to M-H-I-D, and I think I'm saying it right, and it being a delay with them as far as kind of getting the ball rolling once things come to them. Is there going to be like an update with the budget to kind of fix the delay or make the delay not so wide, so to speak? Because I know we have the resources in the county for mental health. We have things in place, but everything kind of circumvented back to M-H-I-D.
Yeah, I've talked to the DA also about that. He wishes the delay wasn't as long. And I saw it next door. You know, there was times when it may take six weeks to get someone some help, and you know, we have shortages of workers, psychiatrists, trying to get psychiatrists, psychologists. We were just at, spoke to the hospital CEO, Patty Jackson, and she's experiencing the same thing, trying to get psychiatrists in the area.
Okay.
And so it's the resources available, and now you have increased cases, so less help, more demand.
Right.
Causes even more of a delay.
Correct. I agree.
So you're talking about the delay in citizens being able to get services.
Yes.
Always been.
Right. And I think, and you kind of looked at everything, it really just boiled back down to M-H-I-D pretty much. So I didn't know if maybe it was, they don't have to, not necessarily the service, but the people to carry out the service, or what, you know, or what kind of plan was in place or could be put in place to kind of have a liaison between, you know, anything.
So the joiner is the entity that oversees the mental health, intellectual disabilities, and the children and youth of Lycoming County. M-H-I-D for both counties, children and youth just for Lycoming County. The Clinton County folks have their children and youth embedded as employees in the county.
Okay.
All right? So we, as the commissioners and the Clinton County commissioners, sit as the entity that really oversees the policy of the joiner. The joiner executes contracts with providers, and so, for example, we, as the board, are the ones who approved the Crisis Intervention Service. That's a contract with an entity because we thought that hiring an entity to oversee crisis intervention 24/7 would get a better response than we would just do with having our own staff. People, literally, if you had a crisis before, you would call, and someone was at the joiner.
Right.
The joiner building, the Sharwell Building, the Commissioner Metzger mentioned, and the employees are coming over to Third Street Plaza. And so we've struggled with the ability to get providers, those agencies to get providers. We have done our bit in terms of trying to make sure that salaries at the joiner for caseworkers are attractive to keep people with our children and youth and with our other caseworkers on the M-H-I-D side. This is, you know, another case where the citizens need to understand the relationship between the state and local government, county government.
I don't think they do.
Right? Where we need, and I don't want to take your public time, but I just want...
No, you're fine.
So you understand, we need, we need more funding for mental health. And all three of us have talked about that, and CCAP, you know, they're, it's unconscionable. That's the word we need to understand, unconscionable. If we saw someone in the road with cancer being not cared for, with diabetes, we would be shocked. But because mental health has a stigma, people sort of don't see it.
It's like a hands-off approach.
It's a hands-off approach. And until we sort of are comfortable with recognizing that any one of us can have a mental health issue, right? And actually, the statistics now, especially among our youth, are showing that really it's going to be more common in our families. But whoever becomes commissioners, that's part of what they need to do, is to get and push it Harrisburg.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it happened so suddenly. I remember I knew a gentleman that had a business in the community for years, and all of a sudden, he walked through our office one day. I had seen him for five years, and he had had a mental health breakdown, and I didn't even recognize him. Didn't recognize him, saw his name, and then realized something had happened, and he lost his business, and he was now in supervision, and it was so sad to see what had happened to him, and he wasn't getting the help he needed, and it was like two different people.
Sad.
Tom?
Good morning. Tom Adams, Williamsport. Hope everyone's doing well. Along the lines with the mental health, being such a psychiatrist for like when kids get in trouble, have problems with the schools when they find out, it's usually a six-month wait, and they have to go down to Harrisburg. So that's, it's sad, and I think a lot of professionals in the mental health field have been, their hands have been tied for quite some years now. They're continually getting these restrictions on them to affirm everything and not try to help people overcome some things that might not really be healthy for them. And what happens is, I believe, is that when you affirm things that are healthy for people, that'll create unhappiness. It'll create, you know, more depression and anxiety and violence. That's why I think we have more violence in the schools, because things are being affirmed and not really being targeted for what the truth really is. And along those lines, in Proverbs 11985, "The arrogant have dug pits for me, men who are not in accord with your law." And we can take that as an entire nation. "And the arrogant have dug pits for this nation, and there are, by men who aren't in accord with the law of God," because they've ignored how the country is founded. One of the biggest lies about our founders, just to mention two of them, that Jefferson and Franklin were deists, is a total lie. We never strong, one of his two strongest Christians, and the history proves that in Franklin's diary or biography or whatever, in two pages, on the one page, he says, "I consider being a deist." And then two pages later, says, "Now I realize how ridiculous an idea that is." And Jefferson, with his life, just the fact that he held church services at the Capitol, and he was a staunch Christian. But, and the other thing with that, along those lines, is that deism in that day was just, just the question whether the Christ, the deity of Christ, everything else in the Bible, they accepted, you know, completely, strong. But today's definitions, you look at it in a thesaurus, it'll equal deism to atheism or agnosticism. The two meanings are completely, you know, different. So we don't know our history, you don't know who our people were that founded us, it doesn't embolden us to stand for what's right and what's true, because there's proven history how when we apply the law of God, the keys of David, as outlined in the Bible, how when you apply that to a governing system, you get greatness. And when you take it away and you turn your back on what founded us, this is where we're getting, you know, we're getting, the evil spirits are coming back. And then verse 87 of 119 is, "They almost destroyed me on earth, but as for me, I did not forsake your precepts." And I encourage everyone to look to the precepts of God, precepts of Christ, so we can survive as a nation and as individual sects.
Thank you, Tom. Any other public comment at this time?
Adam Waltrath, 815 Packer Street, Williamsport. You know, I can respect anyone's opinion on what they think is the truth and what they think isn't. I'd be more than happy to mark some businessmen in here and present them for your questioning so we can do a back and forth. You know, we talk about mental health. I really wonder, the lady that wrote, "Only by fully committing themselves to the aspects of governance can commissioners accomplish their goals." That's an opinion, but what it also is, is that's saying that they don't have any other aspects of their running a business, or they have a different job. That's what the fully committed themselves is. So, but if we want to split hairs, and I won't call it spin, but that's fine. But, you know, I just dealt with an elderly lady in society that was suffering from her own mental health crisis because she was all beside herself with a phone call that she had today. And that's not right. You need to stop. You need to stop harassing people. You need to exercise temperament because you're wrong. I understand your passion. I am... I understand you're upset.
Who are you addressing this at, Mr.?
Specifically you.
Regarding what, sir?
Specific, Scott, don't play the game, Scott. You need to stop harassing these elderly ladies. You need to stop yelling and screaming at them all the time.
This is not appropriate. I'm not harassing any elderly lady.
So please don't do it again.
That's absolutely a lie.
Please don't do it again, okay? Because it's not the first one, it's not the second one. Okay?
Be careful what you're saying because I don't harass anybody, especially an elderly person.
Scott, I'm telling you, I can march them in. So I'm just putting it on the record, putting it on notice.
This is totally inappropriate.
Please stop.
Totally inappropriate for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. And regarding my comments on the editorial earlier, when you state
Well, Scott, I didn't even get to finish talking and you're kicking me off and now you're still going to talk?
If you want to make
No, no, just stop. Just stop.
Fine, fine.
Just stop there. If you want to have a private conversation with me, we can have a private conversation then. Okay? I'm more than happy to do that privately, not publicly.
That's fine. Totally inappropriate.
And you're still going, Scott.
All right, I got two online
Thank you.
Jeff Wiltry. This also extends to the worthy discussion of mental health. Please keep dialogue like this on the forefront. Lack of access to gender-affirming care leads to suicides. Transphobia and similar bigotry should be combated openly with our voices.
So if I can just wind up today, one of the things, you know, there was a conversation about industry, bringing industry. So I see that the chamber president left, but one of the challenges for the next group of commissioners is to find more industrial land in the county. Because we don't have, we're running out. Our industrial park on Reach Road is pretty maxed out. I think I'm pretty, I'm pretty accurate on saying that.
Yeah. It is.
And so that's something we need to, we need to think about. As well as making sure that we balance our
Workforce.
Workforce, absolutely, workforce. And balance our focus not on manufacturing, but also on tourism. On looking at it as an investment portfolio, we wouldn't put all our eggs in one basket. We wouldn't put all our eggs in either government or in manufacturing. We need to have a balanced portfolio that involves tourism and all sorts of different ways to bring people to the county, so.
Okay. We have completed our agenda, so the meeting will be adjourned and we'll meet again on May 18th at 10:00 AM. Thank you.